Now, call for regular meeting for local city council for Tuesday, December twenty first, two thousand and twenty one. Madam clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Mayor pro tem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here.
We will now open the floor for oral communications. You have a maximum of three minutes per speaker. If you would like to call in, the number to call is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. Were there any written communications on closed session?
No ma'am, nothing.
While we wait to see if there are any calls, we have two business items for closed session. One is conference with labor negotiators, city designated representatives, Dean Albro, Jim Tru, Gable Garcia, Jeff Malave with I B E W Local twelve forty five. And we have a second item, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section five four nine five six point nine D two, one case. Seeing no one call in, no one approached the podium and no written comment, we will close oral communications
We will now reconvene the regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, December 21st, 2021. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Protem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor Genell Osborne.
Here. So, we do have some audio issues, if you haven't noticed, and we apologize to those of you watching from home or listening to the radio, but we have been working to fix it, so we're just making sure that we're speaking loudly because we're not sure when the microphones might work or not, so we apologize for any burst eardrums tonight. All right. Mr. Malave, any action to report from closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. The city council discussed the two items on the agenda in closed session and had a discussion with staff about those, but there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Manager, report please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have just two items tonight. The first one is the Planning Division had a successful turnout last Saturday at the community market where public input was received on the city's Streetscape Multimodal Improvement Plan, which is a tentatively planned for a review before the council sometime in March. Any questions about this project can be directed to our Planning Manager, Brian Halverson. And number two, just some updates on the Fire Department. The Fire Department is currently working on updates to the 2021 general plan. They had a dignitary visit from the International Association of Firefighters, Frank Lima, General Secretary/Treasurer. The Lompoc Fire Sea Shift Crew did mentoring with future firefighters visiting from the University of Hawaii, so that was nice. Chief Welch attended an event on Vandenberg Space Force Base for the 44th anniversary of the Honda Canyon Fire. And this one, we have a person leaving, our wonderful family here. Members of the Lompoc Fire Department are celebrating our last week with Battalion Chief Steve Toronos, who has almost 30 years with the city of Lompoc. We all went to wish Steve, went to thank Steve for his many years of service to the city and wish him nothing but happiness in his retirement. So, another long-term employee is heading out to retirement. And that's it.
Well, thank you for that, and now it's time to embarrass you, and I will ask that you join me at the podium for a, what should be a long goodbye, but we'll make it short. So, as many of you may have heard, we are losing our city manager to Cupertino, which is, you know, the land of Apple. He is departing both the land of ag and aerospace, but he has left us with strong roots in moving forward and has launched us, like our local rockets, into a very positive future. So, Jim, I want to thank you for the time and dedication you've given Lompoc and wish you luck on your new adventure. And as a part of that, you have a wonderful plaque for your time served with the dates of how long, and then to drown out the sorrows when you realize what you've left, is a bottle from us at council for you to enjoy over the holidays.
Thank you very much. I'll be short. I don't, I'm better at doing this to others than having them do it to me. I've already sent out a couple emails to staff. me. So, I've already sent out a couple emails to staff thanking everybody for all of the support. It's, oh, man, hopefully we can make it. It's been really, really good support here. It's been a family. It really, really has. It was tough to make the decision. A lot of it came down to just who I work with. It wasn't anything else. It was people I work with. I'll leave it there. Thanks to everybody.
And I believe there was a card that went with it, and I may have left it on the dais. Thank you. Don't want that to get lost as well. All right. We will return to our agenda. And before we move to public comment on consent calendar, the city attorney has some statements he needs to read aloud.
Yes, Mayor. This is with respect to item number five on the consent calendar agenda, which is the item for the appointment and approval of the contract for the proposed new city manager for the city, Dean Albro. Under the Brown Act, I am required to verbally read a number of the terms of his contract, so I'm going to read those right now. The annual salary under the contract in item number five will be $230,000. The vehicle allowance will be $350 per month. Holiday leave will be given for 11 city holidays and one floating holiday per year. Sick leave of 12 days per year with a maximum of 720 hours accrual and payment of 50% of accrued sick leave upon resignation. Vacation leave of 160 hours per year. Management leave of 64 hours per year. Payment of pre-authorized professional dues and travel expenses each year. A cellphone and laptop computer will be provided for business use. Dental and retirement benefits will be provided, consistent with what is provided to the city's management supervisory and confidential employees. And Mr. Albro has agreed to waive and opt out of all city-provided health coverage. With that summary of his, the terms of his proposed contract, Madam Mayor and City Council, if the City Council wishes to appoint Dean Albro and agrees with the terms of that employment agreement, the recommendation is to approve item number five.
Thank you. We will now go to public comment on consent calendar. You have three minutes to speak. Please come forward.
Mayor Christmases, Mayor and Councilmembers, Patrick Warmela, 1505 Northeast Street here in Lompoc. Just wanted to speak on item number five and congratulate you on what I think was an excellent choice. I would say, first of all, I think it was a smart choice because Mr. Albro's a man of integrity, and I think that first and foremost, that's what's most important to the community. Nobody knows the budget better, and these times, that's critical information. He has the right temperament for the job. He's well-liked and well-respected, both in City Hall and out in the community. He has the ability to hit the ground running. And he is bright, and he tells it like it is. And as an elected official, I'm sure you can appreciate getting the straight story each and every time. So, I think it was a smart move because of the money that it saves the city, the time it saves the city, and the fact that it helps calm the waters of what's normally sometimes an upsetting time as you make a transition. And I do want to thank Mr. Troop for his service to the city as well. It's been very much appreciated. And I just want to thank you for this opportunity. Good day.
Thank you. If you'd like to call, the number to call is 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if there are any calls on this, I'll read the purpose for consent is all listed items under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Did we receive any written comment on consent calendar?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Seeing no one call in, we will close public comment on consent calendar and bring it back to council. And I look for a motion. Councilmember Vega.
I'll make the motion that we accept consent calendar as written.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova.
I had a couple of questions on number three. The new lease says that the Martinez party took possession of the city property on November 21st, but then the effective date of the lease is January 22nd. I just want to confirm that the city is receiving payment for the months of November and December, whether it's from the prior leaseee, Mr. Woodward, or from the new incoming?
Good evening. Mike Luther, Poliworks Director. Yes, we are receiving payments currently.
But you received specifically for November and December, those months are being paid by somebody, whether it's the exiting party or the incoming party?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And then, I had a question on number six as well, in regards to the fire engine. The staff report stated that under fiscal, under the fiscal impact paragraph, that funding options can be analyzed and brought back. I would request that it be changed and approved as shall be analyzed and brought back by June of 2022 prior to the end of the fiscal year so that we can identify that. Not can be brought back, but shall be brought back by June 22nd. So, that would require you to amend, I guess, your motion.
It would. Any other questions before we move to potential amendment?
And then I had one more.
Okay. We'll wait to amend the motion, and you can finish your questions.
And then, I will respectfully carry my opposing vote for number five, as was stated in closed session and then was brought forth to the public. Again, clarifying that my vote is not reflective of Mr. Albro as an individual.
Councilmember Vega, would you accept the adjustment to your?
Yes, I will amend the vote.
All right. On the motion? Okay. And can I get a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ball has seconded with Councilmember Cordova voting no on item number five. Any other questions? Okay, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. We will now have oral communications. This is on issues not on our council agenda, but city-related. You have three minutes maximum. If you would like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. 805-875-8201. The floor is now open.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. Updates on the COVID mandates. Governor Newsom's military tribunal has been delayed till December 27th, so I do not have an update on the verdict. I read with interest the German supermarket Aldi, new to Lompoc, has required all employees in Australia to be vaccinated or lose their job. Aldi is incentivizing workers in the United States to get the shot. Aldi was established in Germany in 1913. The COVID mandates and division of population are patterned after Nazi practices in Germany that would be familiar to Aldi. A German chemist, graphene expert, Dr. Andreas Noack, revealed in a video the vaccine contains graphene hydroxide. We had heard graphene oxide, but actually, it's graphene hydroxide. The graphene hydroxide molecules in the COVID vaccine behave like nano razors that cut the lining of veins and flow into major organs. If it's injected directly into the veins, that's when we've seen video of immediate bleeding from the nose and death. If it's injected into the muscle, it takes longer. We've seen sports figures dropping dead when their heart gets going fast. There are three types of vaccine being administered: a placebo, a flu shot, and the deadly shot. Hours after Dr. Noack, that spelled N-O-A-C-K, uploaded the video, he was murdered. All the COVID mandates are unnecessary, harmful, and now we learn potentially very deadly. I urge you to reject all the unconstitutional COVID mandates. The mandates may seem reasonable to those with a Nazi past, but are inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to which you pledged an oath. A good example of how hypocritical the mandates are, masks are mandated supposedly to protect people from COVID in water droplets, but yet, to test for COVID, they have to insert a swab in the nasal cavity, clear back to the blood-brain barrier. Why don't they just take it from a water droplet? I urge you to resist all the mandates.
Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication for all?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Seeing no one call and no one else rise, we will close oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. Our next item is item number seven, appointment of city council member and alternate to the Military Installation Sustainability Steering Committee as part of the Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation Grant. And we have our senior administrative analyst, Erin Keller, to make the presentation to council.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Staff recommends the city council appoint a city council member to the seat on the Military Installation Sustainability Steering Committee, MIS. Earlier this year, staff initiated a planning effort funded by the Department of Defense, DOD, through the old CC, Office of Local Defense Community Cooperation Grant, we received. The steering committee is critical to the success of Lompoc's cooperative planning process with the base. It also takes in consideration the interests of surrounding communities as Vandenberg's launch mission expands. The appointed council member will be asked to attend quarterly meetings through the end of the planning program in July 2022. The next meeting will be scheduled in February. Attend, if there are no travel restrictions, in 2022, a Defense Communities National Summit in March in Arlington, Virginia. Phone calls and message meetings, as requested by the grant team. There are no negative fiscal impacts to the general fund by appointing a city council member to the steering committee other than potential travel costs.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Keller? Councilmember Cordova.
The agenda says to appoint a council member and alternate, but the actual staff report only says to put, appoint a city council member.
I believe that we do have, or can appoint, a council member and an alternate.
We added alternate to the agenda just in case the council wanted to appoint an alternate as well.
Understood. And then, do we know, or can we, is there, I didn't read it in the staff report of who makes up the steering committee, other than?
I actually did attach a roster, and I can get that to you.
I didn't get it.
Okay. But it is comprised of, there's quite a bit of people. So, there is a lot of, we have congressional representatives, we have representatives from the base, from Santa Maria, from Yultin. We have UCSB. I should have had the list in front of me.
Do you want me to quick, I can read quickly. So, we have the grantor from the office, the old CC person, Louis Littleton, city manager. We have Brad Wilkie, Aaron, Stephen Greenberg, Amy Gentili, and Pam Eggers, I can never say her last name, Engbritston. They're the three consultants we're using for the grant process. From Vandenberg, we have Colonel Long, Lieutenant Colonel Aston, Scott Shaw, Laura Miz, who's their senior civilian engineer. We have, from the Military and Defense Solutions, Allison Henderson, federal grant administrator, Amy Miller. California legislative representatives, we have Congressman Salud Carvajal, his designee, Wendy Mata. We have Senate, State Senator Monique LeMone. Her designee is VNA Lopez. Assemblyman Jordan Cunningham, his designee is Lee Collier. For the county, we have Supervisor Bob Nelson, Santa Maria City Manager Jason Stillwell, Assistant City Manager of Santa Maria, Andrew Hackelman. The PIO for Santa Maria is Mark Vander Kamp. We have Peter Rupert, who's a professor of economics at UCSB. Kenneth Freeland, who's the Assistant Director of the Economic Forecast Project at UCSB. And Julie Sinton Proninsky, if I said it right. She is with REACH, the Regional Economic Development Group. She works with them.
And we just added Supervisor.
Joan Hartman was just added, too. So, it is a substantial list.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, this is so very important, and we need to keep this moving forward. I would like to volunteer to be the representative and nominate Councilmember Cordova as the alternate. And would look for a second on that. Councilmember Ball.
I'll give you a second.
Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. Our next item is a public hearing regarding the modification of Conditional Use Permit 0805 to modify or remove a condition requiring sales tax generating uses on the first floor for the Cypress Court project located at 1420 East Ocean Avenue. And we have Planning Manager Brian Halverson for the presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So, tonight, this is another city-initiated item that we'd like to present to you. The Cypress Court project is located at 1420 East Ocean Avenue. I have a lot of photos, and I just wanted to kind of give a quick little background as well for those who are not aware of this project. The Cypress Court development is located at 1420 East Ocean Avenue in the PCD Zone. That project was originally approved in 2009, and then later, it was actually approved by the city council in 2011. There's a 60-unit affordable senior apartment complex out here that was already built and a 12,000-square-foot commercial building in 2013. So, this is the project site of vicinity map. You can see ocean there on the north, Seventh there on the east. And the building that we're going to talk about tonight, the 12,000-square-foot commercial building, is highlighted in red. You can see the apartments, the senior apartments that were built and fully occupied there. Not that it's part of this presentation, but about two years ago, there was also, I believe it was 14 units of affordable apartments at that site, too. It's under plant check now with our building department. So, the site was previously a bowling alley. Many people know that that was the original site of a large bowling alley. It was demolished, I think around 2008, to accommodate this project. So, as a result of demolishing that bowling alley, the council put a restriction on the property, and it's been difficult to, with that particular restriction. It's basically, the first floor, which is approximately 6,000 square feet of that commercial building, limits the uses to sales tax generating. To date, the apartment complex is occupied, but the commercial building remains vacant. So, this is a photo of the exterior as seen from Seventh, facing the west. You can see the, whoops. You can see that these are the senior apartments, and then this building here is the building that we're discussing tonight. There's a blow-up of the building, and it's this whole first floor. The second floor was approved with actually two residential units. The second floor was approved with actually two residential units. So this is me peering through the window and seeing that there is a dirt floor still. That's been that way, I think, since about 2013, or sorry, yeah, 2013. And they left it that way because whoever comes in will need to do, obviously, underground improvements. For example, if it was a, you know, some retail store, they need to plumbing electrical, even the walls. They haven't even put the drywall up. So it's a little bit of a, so, so views from Ocean Avenue. The reason why I'm just putting these photos up is because the property owner, who we have been talking to a little bit from time to time, say that this site is difficult, as say, like a retail store or something like that because the visibility is difficult. Set back quite a bit from the street. And there's another photo here, which the site can be seen much better. You can see it in the background here. But this site eventually will be developed with probably a commercial center. This, we've got a lot of inquiries. Taco Bell was interested at one time and other projects, but just nothing has come into the planning department yet for that particular site. So staff continues to receive calls. We're kind of on the front line of calls when people are asking, can we do this, can we do that? And some of the calls that I personally have received have been from medical. Maybe two to three years ago, Shepherd Eye Center was interested in going in there and we had to say no to them. There's also been just general office uses as well, non-medical, which is not allowed based on this restriction. Just recently, staff reached out to the property owner and the representative for the property owner is here this evening. And there's a letter attached to your staff report tonight with their input. Essentially, they would like the restriction eliminated due to some of the factors that I've already explained in those previous photos. So tonight, our recommendation is to consider the modification and removal of that condition, which is P6 as part of CUP 0805. And then direct staff to prepare a resolution reflecting the city council's decision for adoption at the next city council meeting or provide other direction. I'm just going to leave that, that's the conclusion of my presentation. I don't know if the owner wanted to speak, but I'll just go ahead and leave the photo of the building there. But I am available to answer any questions at this time.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Thank you, Mr. Halverson, having a long history with this. The one question I have is what are the odds of this evolving into a continuation of low-income housing?
Very, very good question. So when the council approved, almost exactly a year ago, approved the amendment to our zoning code, this site actually is the PCD zone and does not allow residential. Now, that being said, it was a commercial office district before, which did allow residential. So that entitlement for the top of that building could be residential, but the bottom residential is not allowed. There are some limited residential, like single-room occupancies and like a caretaker's unit, and there might be one other, but your traditional residential is not allowed in the PCD. Now, along H, maybe a little more information, but along H, we have some special overlay that does allow residential in a commercial zone, but not this area.
Okay, there's nothing hidden underneath this then?
Hidden, you mean?
Hidden is in overlays, et cetera, et cetera. Now, I understand that the tax providing aspect of it has failed. The intent was good, but it hasn't worked, I understand. But I would hate to see more low-income, low-income again there. That's my big concern with it.
Councilmember Vega.
Brian, so the APN for this, this building is separate from anything that the Housing Authority is doing? Is that correct?
Yes, and the Housing Authority does not own that component.
Even though they're contiguous, the APNs are completely separate.
Yeah, they're separate.
Is that correct? Okay, because that was a good question that he asked because if the intent was to expand the low-income housing from the Housing Authority, you know, you just explained that residential is possible on the upper floor. That was a great question that Councilman Starbuck asked. You know, in case that was to turn into low income, how would that impact the cannabis part of it?
Yeah, like I said, single-room occupancies are allowed. Caretaker, and I think possibly transitional housing. I'd have to double-check, but I think those are required by state law to allow those uses.
And I guess my question would be, Housing Authority has entered into a covenant with contracts for this, for city approval, but is there anything in their covenants that don't allow cannabis right there?
Okay, so I don't know about the covenants because I haven't done research on that. I don't know if our city attorney has, but I did check right before because I had a feeling you would ask. But can, this is not a property that you would be able to do cannabis because of the buffer zones. So there's either a youth center, a school, or something nearby that's created a buffer that would not allow cannabis for this building. It's not a candidate.
Thank you.
Any more questions for staff before we invite the representative of the property forward? Seeing none, the representative for the property is welcome to come to the podium and speak to us or answer questions if council has it.
Mayor, I suggest you open the public hearing.
Did I not do that when I announced the item?
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I read out, I read out that it was a public hearing and that we were doing Agenda Item 8 and read it all into record. Is that not opening the public hearing?
Okay.
All right.
Sorry.
I can say we are now opening the public hearing, if that helps.
What you've done is adequate, thanks.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Mark McAllister. I'm from Eagle, Idaho, and here representing the Pacific Companies and TPC Commercial LLC. Oh, am I too far away? Sorry. I'd like to thank you very much for considering removing this restriction. I came onto this project about five years ago and as the commercial representative for our company that builds affordable housing all over the country and specifically in this state, I drove in for the first time and I said, well, there are retail buildings here? This isn't a retail building to us. It's, you know, as they said, too far off the street for retailers to approach it, to get the traffic counts, to get the visibility that they need. And so we've had, it marketed since 2013 professionally. The comments that we get from our marketing representatives are that there is strong interest for medical office users. There's strong interest from office users, but in all that time, there hasn't been one inquiry for any kind of a retail use. When we have buyers come along, folks who would either occupy part of the building and re-tenant the rest of the building, that are professional medical office users primarily, it's the restriction on the ground floor that sends them away, that breaks those contracts. They just aren't confident that even though they need the space and would love to be in the space in their office capacities, that they can make the remainder of the construction pencil with the rents that they can achieve from retail. So I thank you very much for considering this. We'd love to deliver the rest of the building to this community in a way that it's good for the neighborhood, that it's good for the residents of the building that we built next door, and good for the city as a whole. But that's going to be, continue to be slow in coming with the retail restriction in place.
Thank you. Any questions for, thank you, Councilmember Vega?
Sir, I believe back in the day when this thing was, has been marketed for a long time, it was, it was part of the resistance was because there were parking restrictions?
Yes.
And maybe you could clarify on that, what you know, because I remember once upon a time, it came to council because they were looking to actually add another parking lot, but it was across the street from Ocean Avenue. And at that time, it didn't move forward. And I'm just kind of going by what I remember, what I recall.
I don't know if I can speak to this particular instance, but in terms of what the parking situation is at the property currently, we have approved, when we constructed the whole development, there's 97 spaces total available. And there's a cross-parking agreement, a shared-use agreement, that the five condos that represent the commercial building share all of those spaces, so we don't have any easements or restrictions. It's just all everybody's. According to code, 66 of those spaces are allocated to the residential, leaving 31 spaces available for the commercial, which at 9,293 square feet of usable commercial space works out, interestingly, to be exactly 31 spaces. So it was contemplated correctly for that type of construction, for commercial construction, which I believe in the code is 300, one space per 300 feet. So all that math works out. The challenge that we run into is that there is a larger requirement. At one time, it was 185 square feet, Brian, is that right? It's, in any case, there's a higher load required for medical office. And so the second challenge that we face is, you know, if we want to cast the broadest net and get the best tenants into this space, we're going to need to work on a way to do some parking adjustment as well. I know that there's, you know, avenues to do that that exist through application. When I was at the building at 5:00 this afternoon, of the 66 spaces that are required for the residential, 42 of those spaces were occupied. And due to the nature of the residents in this particular housing complex, you have a number of people that simply don't drive. And we see this a lot in cities where we build, where we build projects for the homeless, where they just don't have cars. And we work hard to get, to get a parking consideration for the project simply because the residents aren't drivers and it doesn't, it doesn't work quite the same way that a normal residential project would. So, so we have a couple of challenges here in order to get the building deployed to the highest and best use, which we think is medical. But there's no question that the retail component drives everybody away. When, when we get under contract with somebody that wants to do medical office, you know, we can go through the normal means to work the parking situation out and we have a chance, but, you know, too many strikes against us is too many strikes against us.
No, I appreciate that comment. I just wanted to refresh, anybody that didn't know, that basically before, there was another client here from the medical side that wanted to use that and tried to get approval for it. But as you said, for the medical side of, for medical use or something, the parking restrictions didn't apply at that time. And I just, you know, I'm actually hoping that you find somebody that will work, but on the retail side, I can see what you're shooting for.
Yeah.
Because that parking does comply with retail use if we can just get someone to stick with it. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'm going to make a couple of comments here real quick. There's a lot of medical buildings scattered throughout Longpoke, so I'm sure we're going to create vacancy issues. They're very specific buildings that are going to, they're very expensive per-square-foot builds. Rents aren't going to recoup. So what we're going to do is misplace people probably and have medical buildings that are going to remain empty. I think one of the things that I would really like to see on this, because I have a big distrust in what happens down the road here, Brian, is we make a condition of approval for professional office space on this project. I said, I agreed, do away with the retail. It's failed, it's not going to work. But professional space, opening up to other than medical. I mean, everybody here is focused on medical. We got plenty, but other uses.
And that is for discussion after public comment. Any other questions for staff or for the owner representation? Seeing none, thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
And we will open the floor for public comment on this item. If you would like to speak on Item 8, the number to call is 805-875-8201, The podium is now open and you have three minutes to speak on the item. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication on this item?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Seeing no one call in, we will close oral communications and bring it back for discussion. Councilmember Cordova.
I would support Councilmember Starbuck's proposal if he turns that into a motion.
How would I make this? How would I make this motion, Brian? You want to follow staff recommendation here with just the inclusion of a condition for professional office?
I think if we just read it exactly the way it's worded in the staff report, since that's been blessed by our city attorney, I think that would suffice. Which is number three, direct staff to prepare a resolution reflecting the city council's decision for adoption. And that would be to, you would tell us if you want it modified or removed and we would, I would recommend just removing it. So you could just read number two and just put the word in, remove. But if the city attorney thinks otherwise, then we'll take this direction.
No, that would, that would be a fine way to do it if you just wanted to get rid of the entire condition.
And I just wanted to add, just, I think it's kind of an interesting fact that when the council approved the new zoning code, there's actually more flexibility for parking now. As you might recall, we allow on-street parking. And also, there's other measures that the applicant has to reduce the overall parking demand. One thing that the owner didn't specify, which I wouldn't expect him to know, but we still have the requirement, if it did become medical, even though it could become general office, for parking requirements per exam room and per employee. So it is the, one of the most strict parking requirements, medical, but we could definitely get general office in there as well, maybe even a combination so that it can kind of be less impact on the parking. But there is a pretty good-sized parking lot right in the front. You can see from this photo, which is almost pretty much, over the years, every time I visit, there's not that many cars out here. Of course, the demand is for the residential is in this area.
Well, whenever, whenever there's a parking problem in Longpoke, that means we've done something right.
I agree, I agree.
Yes, so I guess if you're suggesting, or saying that we could remove, modify condition of approval to, you know, that would go ahead and suffice for a motion?
Correct, which is remove condition of approval P6 from CUP 0805. And then if you just want to read the rest of that, I think that would suffice.
No, I think it suffices already. But, but you're saying to remove the condition, not to modify it. You want to remove the condition. So that any use that would be allowed by the zoning district would be allowed to go there, whether they're sales tax generating or not.
Yes. That will be my motion, thank you.
Is that a second, Councilmember Cordova?
Yeah, I could still second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five zero. Our next item is Item 9. Council requests considerations of permitting temporary cannabis events at specific city parks. Introduction of Ordinance Number 1683, parentheses 21. Authorizing temporary cannabis events at Riverbend Park, Canatom Park, and River Park, and establishing a permitting process and fees for such events. Adoption of Resolution Number 6443, parentheses 21. Modifying the master fee schedule. And we have our Community Development Director, Kristi Alarcon, to make the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, staff in public. I was waiting for my slideshow to be up there. Thank you. I am Kristi Alarcon, your Community Development Director. And tonight, per council request, I am bringing back for consideration the allowance of temporary cannabis events in Longpoke. So, per council request, staff researched and created a path for permitting temporary cannabis events in the city. Since the August 3rd presentation, nothing much has really changed with regards to how these events would be permitted, nor what these types of events really are. So to get into a little more discussion, I wanted So to get into a little more discussion, I wanted to kind of quickly run through some of these slides that you, and they are a lot of what you saw back in August, which went over what a cannabis event organizer is, the fact that an event organizer is not a cannabis cultivator, distributor, manufacturer, retailer, really, an organizer is someone who, that is solely what they do, they, they put on events. And the fact that they have to obtain a event license from the state, as well as a local license from the city. So to speak to local approval, we would be looking at doing the same process as we do for a lot of our other special events. We fine-tuned our special event application, which was attached here to your staff report package, and the, the added level of review would become, come from the clerk's office in reviewing to ensure all of the vendors would have CCU licenses with the city, to, and then other components, which we already do for other events, but the nature of a cannabis event may require a little bit more review, and that is in ensuring that through PD, fire, and, you know, emergency services, knowing that the, whatever the event organizer has submitted is adequate for that event and for what the city perceives the needs are for an event of that size and nature. So to kinda get into some of the main parts of what we had discussed was, if council wanted to move forward with permitting temporary cannabis events, we would wanna designate some locations, and we wanted to look at parks. So we had three sites, which were River Park, Ken Adam Park, and Riverbend Park. So you see up there on the slide is our River Park, which is the home to our Lompoke River Park campgrounds. It is one of our sites that hosts some large events, such as the wine festival, where we had about twenty-five hundred participants, and recently, the AIDS ride as well, with about thirty-five hundred participants. It's a forty-five acre site, so lots of space, lots of flat area, sufficient parking, gazebos, a lot that could be done to host a, a large event at that park. Another site that we looked at was Ken Adam Park, and that's right there off of Highway one. We do, we are concerned with if there is onsite consumption or smoking cannabis onsite with the fire risk and that hazard, so that is definitely a, something that we would involve fire in the review process to ensure we put the appropriate conditions on the event organizer as to how they're going to address that, be that brush clearance, installation of decomposed granite, whatever would need to be done to make that a safe event and, and reduce the risk of, of fire. We don't anticipate that being a large site to be utilized for an event, just given the topography and a lot of our native plants and trees, but, you know, maybe up to six hundred, and there is also the constraints with parking, because we don't own a lot of parking up there, but it could be resolved through the event organizer coordinating with Allen Hancock College and entering some sort of agreement for parking. So a few more photos of Ken Adam Park. We wouldn't wanna get rid of any of our beautiful trees up there, so we would just wanna make it a little safer, trim some stuff up, and get rid of a lot of that really dry brush. And then lastly, there's Riverbend Park, which is at the end of North A Street. It's thirteen-plus acres of soccer fields, home of Lizaraga Ball Field. There's sufficient parking out there, and it's hosted some large events, such as soccer tournaments with, you know, a couple thousand participants. It is a very flat site, and lots of open space, could be a good, large venue for a cannabis, outdoor cannabis event. So where I did wanna provide some clarification, what is different about tonight since the August third meeting was, back then, there was a lot of concern expressed that the city does not have the appropriate staffing levels to oversee such type of event. So I really wanted to clarify what city staff's role is with regards to hosting events. We review the special event applications, and we condition the event for the, to issue a permit. We don't operate the event. We don't, we aren't securing the event, we don't provide onsite security, they hire security for these events. The responsibility is on the event organizer to prevent us a site plan, a traffic plan, impaired driver plan. All of those things are done by the event organizer, and they have to meet our requirements. So again, there may be times when city staff are called into need, I won't say there will be zero impact, but just as with regards to any other city event, like flower festival or wine festivals, if there is increased traffic control needs or something where PD needs to be called out, or emergency medical services, or an unexpected situation, we, we have to respond to that, and that is staff's, that is city staff's role. So again, we believe the current staffing levels do not affect hosting of such events. We've provided sufficient timetables for evaluation and issuance of the special event permit, and we, we also feel that in, we vetted the revised application timelines to all of the other departments and divisions that review these, to ensure that those timelines fit with their existing working schedules. If they got it in, is that enough time to allow them to review it? So for consideration tonight, if council would want to allow cannabis special events, a couple of the things that are in the ordinance and the report is the limit of the number of events that could be hosted, you could further limit the types. And lastly, there's an amendment to our fee schedule, which is going to allow for a hundred percent cost recovery of any impacts, and that's impacts to fire, police, other departments, solid waste, if that came up, and even our city attorney's office. If for some reason we have to send something out to get a, a legal opinion on it, that's something we're gonna estimate on the front end and collect as a deposit as part of the event, and so it, it will be one hundred percent cost recovery. So in conclusion, allowing such events could draw many people to the area, which would result in a positive fiscal impact, which include the tax revenue from the cannabis business operations, general transit occupancy tax, and other associated tourism tax revenues such as gas and sales taxes. So that concludes my presentation tonight, and I thank you. If you guys have any questions, or if there's anything, PD is here to answer any questions, if there's concerns about PD's ability to respond to these, like a lot of our other special events, they're also here, Mario is here with Parks and Recreation, should you have any questions regarding that. So it's always a team approach on all of these special events, like the parades and stuff, but we all come together and we make 'em happen, so a lot of us don't feel like these will be that much different, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, any questions for staff? Councilmember Vega.
Kristi, the last time this came up, it came back with, I, I think one of the things that we were trying to address was the fact that, okay, there's full cost recovery, but full cost recovery on the backs of cannabis was one of the issues. And one of the things I'd like to see addressed in our budget, or another way that we can, when we approve special events, that we make sure that the areas that are going to be leased out or rented are, meet a certain standard before we lease them out, which will help Parks and Recreation. You know, many times our parks are a little substandard, we're worried about cost recovery, but we're not worried about fixing them. So it's not that we're not worried about it, I get it, there's maybe not enough money, we don't have enough staffing, and I wanna see if we can address some of that also, because, you know, the park and recreations manager should be also involved in, in making sure the area meets a certain standard, yes, not just ran a precinct, worn out dirt with gopher holes and everything. I think that, yes, to charge somebody for doing that is great, if you can get away with that, but I don't think, I think we're better than that, I think we should set a standard, and whichever park meets that standard, that should be the one that's primarily open for any kind of event. I think we can do better, I think the kids and the families would appreciate that, I think it would put Lompoke on the map, again, we would have people coming in for the events, but if we had it looking good, it would be great. So I think we can probably address that at the same time, not to be negative with the cannabis, but it has nothing to do with the approval of that, but I'd like to go hand-in-hand so that we can go a step further, 'cause we seem like we, we kinda always kinda don't go the full amount of ways that we have. We have the power of creating a budget, using some monies to address that, so let's go back and let, let the, either Park and Recs or somebody here do an evaluation on the condition. I think that, that way we could, we could justify going in and spending some money, because we're going to make some money in return, and we're gonna put Lompoke on the map, and actually, it's an economic driver.
City manager, before you depart, I do believe there has been some discussion about a Parks Master Plan that would help us understand what the different needs are at the different parks for improvement or complete revamps, is that correct?
That is correct, actually, that was coming also from the Parks and Rec Commission to do a Parks, we've never had a full-blown Parks Master Plan. I know Mario is working on looking into that, getting that done, and it is something that, you know, a city, any city should have, considering how many park acres we have, we should have something like that, yes.
So that would help address the concerns of assessing our condition of our parks, what condition we could address immediately, and what might be the long-term investment in the parks outside of, of this issue, that would be an approach for everyone.
Yeah, they, and the Parks Master Plans do take into account what could a park be tomorrow, not just what is it today and, and what has it been in the past. They'll take in all kinds of civic input, they'll have multiple meetings, discussions to see what could be changed in a park to make it better, maybe move a tennis court from one park to another park, you know, those types of discussions to really get an idea of what could the city parks be. So it is, it's a long process, but the end result is usually a very well-thought-out plan.
And as a result, would be spending the money appropriately and, and making the right improvements, not just, but we could do some short-term improvements that make all of our parks more viable ahead of that, but not overdo it, so that we aren't putting in additional work above and beyond, you know, just making it functional and clean and, and safe and, and depending on the park.
That is correct.
Okay, does that help, Councilmember Vega?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, okay, that's exactly what I'm looking for, but I'm hoping the council here, since we're being way more proactive as we move forward, and I think that we should have more short-term goals here to make something happen, the long-term plan never seems to come to fruition, you know, it's a plan that we can, somebody can brag about, we have a plan, but it doesn't ever come out, because we never put dates and deadlines to saying, hey, we wanna have it ready for an event by so-and-so time. I think that, look at Ryan Park, let me use Ryan Park as, as an example, the tennis courts, you have people maintaining them on their own, and I think that's something that we need to, in the budget process, we need to address, to make sure that we have the staffing to do this. So I think short-term would work better for us, Lompoke can't afford to go long-term. We've gone long-term for so long, I think some of the consensus here on the, on the council is we need it to happen, so thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
I think I can support the comments that Councilmember Vega just made with regards to wanting to have that Parks Master Plan and have it be an actual plan that we're working towards, and not just a long-term goal or wish list. However, that would require us going back to the budget, and that's not something that we're doing tonight, unfortunately, although I would love to see that. So again, I don't, I don't necessarily buy off on a promise that we're gonna do that, I, I agree with Victor, that we wanna see that in motion. So here's a couple of questions that I have. Well, I'll make a statement first, that I, I don't see any new information on this report that I feel is of any impact, I mean, it's almost mirror of what we saw already in August. So with that, I go back and I ask, is there any, I mean, what is our stance when we're saying we're changing the city ordinance to allow for cannabis events, which means we're gonna allow people to smoke cannabis, because the consumption, the, the perception is that the events could have consumption? How does that change the overall smoking regulation or, or, or ordinance that we have at our parks, city attorney?
We do have a prohibition on smoking in our city parks right now, but what this ordinance would do is create an exception and say, if it's a cannabis event, then you are allowed to smoke there as part of the cannabis event.
So, so we would allow somebody to smoke cannabis, which is a somewhat of an altering, you know, substance, but we wouldn't allow, I'm just gonna say John Doe, smoke a cigarette, which isn't a altering substance?
If you choose to adopt the ordinance, then yes.
Correct. In addition, my other question would be that we identified, specifically for Ken Adam Park, but I have other questions on the other parks as well, but specifically for Ken Adam Park, we identified that staff recommends, if this site is to be considered for cannabis events, that the city invest in clearance of much of the brush in the central area. So again, it goes back to, we don't know what that investment cost would be, we throw out the words a hundred percent cost recovery, but yet, we don't know what that is, what that's gonna look like, so it goes back to what I was thinking back in August, is if we don't know what the cost is, and we don't know what the potential exposure is for our fire department, how can we invest, or how can we ask to invest? Like I said in August, I'm not willing to invest in something that we're not willing to invest for our normal residents, but we're gonna invest for cannabis users, I have a problem with that. If, if we, this staff report is, in my opinion, providing, I guess, you're attempting to establish a permitting process for such events while failing to establish the positive impacts it would bring to the Lompoke residents to allow the use of this in our parks, but also, you're also failing to identify any adequate measures or identify possible negative impacts with regards to first response, fire, or cost of, of repairs to these parks to make it happen. So, and another statement that was made, they would have to meet our requirements, but there's no requirements being written in this plan. The only requirements that you're asking for is changes to our application process. You're not really giving us a list of requirements, so the requirements, again, are gonna be made when an applicant submits, and then we're gonna write out what the requirements are at that time? That would be a question that I would have. Also, in conclusion, that particular paragraph states that staff anticipates that there would be community interest, where's your supporting facts that there would be community interest? I mean, did we put out a survey, did we poll our city residents that this is what they want, and, and that there is a large percentage of, of the city residents of Lompoke that want this to happen in our city? And then it says, these types of events are in And then it says, these types of events are in demand, and it is foreseeable that such an event will come to our city parks and, and will draw thousands of people. Again, where is the supporting information on this?
So, I guess for clarity, one of the questions that Councilmember Cordova is asking is, the process with which you would evaluate the application is what you normally do for any group that came in?
Correct, if you look at the Parks and Recreation, Special Events, general information that is attached to the staff report, it goes into some detail on what we would ask. So again, much like a building you build, we don't tell you how to build it. We ask you to, if you are applying for a cannabis event license, you should know what the rules are. So you then submit to us, which we talk about here, we want to know a site plan. How many people are going to be there? Do you have the appropriate insurance? How many portable potties are you going to have there? You know, we, we ask, we give them some guidance on what we would expect for security, given the size of the event. And then, the, the way the process currently works is, they submit this site plan, they submit all of the information, and then we route that to the appropriate divisions and departments. We review all of the information, and if there are areas where it may seem deficient, or maybe there's not enough clearance for the fire truck or whatever, then we meet with the applicant, and it's a collaborative process where we work through a lot of these things. The other piece that, we don't have a hard and fast, you know, number when it comes to security, because sometimes it depends on the nature of our criminal activity, or our gang activity, or what we have going on. There may be times when we have to have an escalated number of security guards, or armed security guards. It's no different than the Flower Festival, we do the same thing for them. So when we talk about cannabis events, the cannabis licensing process to be an event license holder, they have a whole list of things, that isn't something, we're not issuing them that license. We're issuing them our license, and we are permitting the event. So again, they're going to have to jump through all of their state hoops as well. So, the, the state license process, for example, it's an event organizer, they are, they, the role is maintaining the event space, hiring security, posting required signs, providing the DCC with the list of all the participants. All of these things are the same things they have to do with us. So it's not like they just come in and say, we're going to have an event. No, they have to do a whole bunch of stuff, and it is a collaborative process. They meet with staff, we go over all the requirements. Sometimes they try to get us to lessen some of those requirements, but we don't. So that, that's the process.
Councilmember Cordova.
Nothing of what was just said addressed any of what my questions were, because I wasn't talking about security, I wasn't talking about any of that. I don't know, maybe if, if a chief is available to answer some questions for me, I have some questions. And Chief, I'm sorry to put you on the spot or ask you questions.
That's okay.
But I, but I need to know this, you know, on behalf of the residents of the community. So, if you rent out, if we, if the city rents out the fields and we have, you know, a thousand parents and kids come, do you anticipate that, that we're going to need armed guards for, or armed security guards for a soccer event? Or something of that nature?
Well, these days, in, in the past, I would tell you no. But you look around the country, you see some of the things that are happening that would routinely be accepted or, or long-established events where things go awry. There's always a potential for that when you have a large group of people. I can tell you this, when I first got here, we had a couple of wine festivals, and it was a concern about that. And we would, at that time, Mario, myself, the fire chief, we'd go out to the venue, look at all the concerns, and then based upon the projected number of attendance, I always place some security demands in terms of having either private security, or if the possibility that we had staffing available to lend ourselves to those events. So you, in this day and age, you always have to be prepared, whether it's cannabis or just a regular community event, you always have to be prepared to, you know, provide adequate crowd control and to provide for safety for those who are participating in that event.
So Chief, you just mentioned right now that, you know, if, if there is the possibility that we can help staff, the reality is, is that Lompoc has been looking at lower staff levels when it comes to RPD and, and due to a, a, a list of reasons why, right? So my concern is, by us saying we're going, whether you cost-recover or not, by placing a number of officers to an event that could potentially bring 5,000 people that could potentially have a large majority of these people smoking cannabis, it is, is it safe to say, or is it reasonable to say, that you're then taking away resources from the residents of this community to go staff that? Even if it is overtime, even if it is, you're taking resources from the normal activity that happens in Lompoc. We already have enough activity, we already have crime, we already have gang violence, we already have drug problems, we have all of this other stuff. And so my concern is genuine when I say that we would then be staffing potentially, I don't care if we cost-recover it or not, you're taking away resources from the residents of this community to place them on an event because of the perceived, you know, activity that, which it would be consumption or, you know, anything else. Is that reasonable to consider, that we would be taking officers that could be on the streets of Lompoc, answering to those calls, and now they're going to be answering or babysitting an event? Even if it is cost-recovery?
Absolutely, so if you look at any major community when they have major events, they always have the security component that they look at. For years, I worked at the Rose Parade, for example, and they would bring in all kind of resources, and they would factor that in to the whole event cost. And any major event like that, you have to do that. For us, it would be, not only could we draw from us, is if we could hire some of the outline agencies to come in and work that event too as well. Because I'll, I'll be honest, if you have an event with 5,000 people, there are security concerns. And as you mentioned, Councilmember Cordova, when you have people that are, it's just like when you go to some events and they have beer gardens and they restrict where people can consume alcohol, they don't have, you know, open consumption throughout the whole facility, but, you know, you'd have to look at all those kind of restrictions. I don't know that I feel completely comfortable with having 5,000 people, you know, using marijuana and not be concerned about the impact of that.
Thank you, Chief.
I'll let Councilmember Vega go, and then Councilmember Ball, Councilmember Vega.
I'm sorry, thank you. Kristi, I believe the last time this came up, you said it was a permission to work on the final plan, is that correct? I mean, that's what this was meant to be? You know, I wasn't sure, it was, it was given you permission to get started to implement a plan?
No, it's, it is, the recommendation for the staff report is to allow temporary cannabis events at Riverbend, Ken Adam, and River Park, establish the permitting process fees for such events, adopt the resolution modifying the master fee schedule to allow for the fees for cannabis events, and amend any of that stuff as you guys see fit.
I got you. And, and you know, I guess I'd like to reference here. I understand what Councilmember Cordova was referencing. What it sounds like, it's, it's kind of like the way the planning department works. You bring in a project and everybody kind of goes, gets together and figures out what you're going to let happen, correct? Now, with a cannabis, you know, event, it seems like there should be some criteria established for the application process to see, how many we're going to let in here, what's going to happen here? Lompoc can handle 3,000, 2,000, maybe 1,000? You know, there's, there, it seemed like the criteria is very open, because the collaboration, as you stated, is just like the planning, planning department collaboration. It's going to be between you guys to see what you guys want, what you guys are going to let in, how much you're going to charge them, and depending on who it is.
So I would state to that, there's code amendments in here. It says, requires city council direction, limit the number of cannabis events held within the city or on city-owned property to one per calendar quarter, or provide alternative direction.
I got you.
It talks about all three parks, or provide.
And we're going to, I'm, I'm leaning toward that, I just wanted to ask you to clarify, okay?
Yeah, so there, it, it's all in there now, and what your guys' role is here is to really look at it and say, is this okay? One, do we want to allow them at all? Two, if we allow them, do we want them at all three of those parks? Do we want to limit how often we allow them? Those are all council policy decisions.
Thank you for your answers.
Councilmember Ball.
I, I apologize to the chief, if he'd be willing to walk all the way back up here. I had a couple of questions for him.
You're being asked to return for some additional questions.
Sorry about that. Okay. Thank you, Chief. So it was mentioned that for an event to take place, a cannabis event was mentioned, that there's the chance that it takes additional resources away from the community in terms of their traditional role and what they'd be doing on a day-to-day basis. Can you, is there any difference between us having our Christmas parade and having that kind of change the dynamics of, of, of safety throughout our town? Now a wine event, wouldn't that also change, in that same context, change the application of additional resources perhaps?
So, let me use the Christmas parade, for example. Several weeks ago, we had the Christmas parade. We never anticipated the turnout that we had, and we were pleased beyond words with the amount of people who turned out for that event. But that took an extraordinary amount of dedication from my staff, because it's on a state highway, it requires us to have every intersection, we have to post a police officer. And on that night, we had 26 officers come in and work that parade. And about four-fifths of those folks came in on a day off to work that parade. And the reason we had to do that was, outline agencies could not lend us support other than Santa Maria, who provided us a couple of motor officers, and Guadalupe, who provided us a couple of officers as well. So had the officers not willingly volunteered to work that detail, we wouldn't have had the parade. So I was very pleased with that. So, any event of that nature or that magnitude, when you have that many people, you have to have adequate people to police it and to provide, you know, crowd control, traffic safety. And if you're doing them on a regular basis, you need added deployment. And as I mentioned before, some of the outline agencies right now are currently facing the same staffing issues that we are, in terms of having people.
And you would have the same challenge with a wine event?
Absolutely.
Right, so if we had 2,500 people in River Park, you have issues with, I mean, you're going to tell them, this is the type of security I think that they need, this is the local regulations that I think can maintain safety, that would apply to that as well. But you wouldn't necessarily know that until the people who put together that event had submitted their plan and said, this is what we'd like to do.
The good thing with these plan, or not a good thing, but what's, what you can plan for is that when you have these events, people are paying to attend. And oftentimes, what do they do? They, they pay for the event in advance, so basically, these organizers are going to know how many people they're going to have. And because these events don't happen throughout the whole region, it's kind of new to it, I can imagine there are going to be big draws, so you're going to have big turnouts.
Now, for, if someone, if we do go through with this, and someone does submit a plan, and you have the opportunity to say, well, based on the location, the amount of people there's, you know, expecting to have, this is what I, this is the regulation that Lompoc is applying in terms of safety and security that's required, is that fair?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for that. Now, if you would just humor me with one more thing, and I, and I'm, I hope this makes sense to everyone, because I want to show that the city of Lompoc is capable, over time, through their staff, of developing a plan, working with all parties, and getting us to the finish line. You may not agree with this, but there was a time when we had no dispensaries, and now we have a lot. There was a time when we didn't know how we were going to stand that up, we didn't know what the regulations locally were going to be, but all these fine folks at City Hall, throughout their different departments, had input into crafting what would be a safe approach for having dispensaries in town. Now, we can argue about the number, but I'm talking specifically about the safety. Now, to illustrate that, do any of the Lompoc police officers on duty work security for any dispensaries?
No.
No, and the reason for that is because we had the city create regulations where you would have the opportunity to say, this store over there, based upon their size, how many people they might have in at one time, a lot of different variables, you get to have input on the security that that business is required to have to open.
That's correct.
So is it fair to say that with events, you're going to have that same regulatory power to be able to review someone's plans and say, this is the amount of security that is required?
I would say yes, but I also want to say this, because we're big on being transparent. And I can tell you that with the number of dispensaries that we have, in recent spot audits that we've done, some people have been out of compliance with having security personnel when they're supposed to have it.
Well, that's, that's a, that's a great argument for us having more compliance staff, I agree with you there, for sure.
And so, so one of the things that we have to do is that we have to be committed to that too, on a daily basis. So, I just want to clarify that.
Thank you for that. That's all I got.
Councilmember Cordova.
So, I'm trying this new thing where I try to not let my anxiety get to me. But here's, here's what I'm listening, okay? Here's what I'm hearing, is, is that we're comparing a cannabis event to our city's Christmas parade, for some reason, when the city's Christmas parade is an event for our residents, and they get to participate, and it is not something, in my opinion, our residents have the right to be able to host those events in their home. We're not inviting 5,000 people to come in from out of town and potentially have a large percentage of those people be impaired or altered due to consuming any kind of substance. So please, people of Lompoc, pay attention to what you're hearing up here, because the fact that they are comparing a cannabis event to your Christmas parade is a failure, number one. Number two, the chief just said in the questioning by Member Ball that there wasn't enough officers, even for our own parade, we didn't have enough officers. So why would we think and follow up, Councilmember Ball, by saying that the city of Lompoc is capable of providing these services when we just said that we didn't even provide it for our own Christmas parade? And we didn't have outside agencies that could come in and could support us, even for our own Christmas parade, let alone for us bringing on to ourselves potentially 5,000 people that again, have the potential to be altered or impaired. So I, I have to say that I disagree with the argument, and I don't think you're educating anyone. God, I hope that we're not educating anyone here by saying those arguments.
So I agree, Councilmember Cordova, comparing a, a city-hosted event that requires city staff, that requires...
Can I, can I, because I'm, I'm not being quoted correctly, so I'd like some clarity.
Hold on just a second, you're absolutely right. Comparing something that is a city-produced, city-staffed, city-managed event against what is a private event with paid attendance, with a budget, that we would then require them to hire private security in order to provide those, is, is a false comparison. them to hire private security in order to provide those, is a false comparison. So I give you that. But the point of most of the events that come to our parks that are not city-sponsored, the Flower Festival, the Car Show, that the Police Foundation does, is not a city event. That is a private organization that does that. When the Wine Festival comes to town, those are all private organizations that lease the property, go through the planning process, submit to all the departments, and often have a requirement to hire private security in order to provide it. And what the impact on our public safety, both fire and police, is, is if there's an issue, if something rises to the level of needing a response, the additional responsibility that we bear as a community to be able to respond to that. And that does impact the departments.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Councilmember Ball.
Okay. So let me repeat, just to be very clear. I never compared the Christmas party to the cannabis event. And what I was specifically referencing is, Councilwoman Cordova mentioned that because this is a cannabis event, it is specifically going to take away resources from people in our city that expect everyday, normal security, public safety. So all I was trying to point out is that any type of event, whether it's a Christmas parade or a wine event, which no one, I put that out there too, and no one wants to respond to this, a wine event with people that are 2,500 people that are impaired, mind-altering, whatever you want to call that, let's talk about that. My point is, is that any type of event is going to take what is the normal day-to-day operations and mix it up, because it's an event. That's all I'm saying about that. Something that we might consider is that we need our police officers at a city-hosted event, for sure. Absolutely, we need all the help that we can get. With some of these other events, we have the ability to create a stipulation that requires them to hire private security. So again, to make it sound like we're going to have a cannabis event, and our whole police department is going to go, need to babysit that event and take all the resources out of our town, I'm not sure that's quite transparent either. So if we'd like to get into the weeds on this, pun intended, let's talk about the difference between a 2,500-person wine event and a 2,500-person cannabis event. And then let's go from there. So I hope that's clear.
All right. Councilmember Cordova, you will get the last comment, and then when we go to public comment.
So let's do it. Let's talk about this wine event, because I feel sometimes like, the fact that I sit as president of Explore Lompoc, which I am not wearing that hat today, if anyone wants to attend an Explore Lompoc meeting, you can do it at that time, on that particular location. That's not what I'm wearing today. So the fact that last time I got it thrown on my lap, that somehow I should understand this, because it's tourism, it's happening again. So here we go. I don't, if, first of all, Explore Lompoc doesn't approve or doesn't do wine events. It's the Wine Festival Association. So if this council allowed, or your city ordinance or regulations allowed for those before, that was before I was on council, and I would be more than happy to have that discussion when it's appropriate. But that's not what we're talking about today. However, if we're going to reference it, chief, how many officers do you have on the street on a normal basis, day-to-day basis?
On a night shift?
On any shift.
Four and one.
There you go. So there might be a possibility that those four officers do have to respond to that cannabis event on that date, which means it depletes the resources for that day of the residents of this community to handle calls for anything else that's going on.
I think we should go to public comment, and you're welcome to make your comments after we take public comment. All right. So we'll open the floor for public comment on this item, and you have three minutes. You're more than welcome to come to the podium. If you'd like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I think we're getting all off into the weeds, when I think we need to keep it simple. Your job is to look out for the citizens of Lompoc. I sat in this room and watched a citizen produce photographs of the soccer fields that had been ruined by the Parks and Rec Department. Deep ruts. It was horrible. I visited your tennis courts, and my first impression was it reminded me of photographs of Nagasaki after the bomb. Your streets need to be kept clean and weed-free. Your parks could use a lot of work for the citizens of Lompoc. During the last 18 months, I attended picnics at the parks, and the barbecue grills were actually chained and padlocked, so the citizens could not use them. The actions that have been taken against the citizens boggle the mind. What we're talking about tonight is the use of your parks. This body has determined that smoking, citizens cannot smoke in your parks. In your tennis courts that are destroyed, your barbecue grills chained off, your playgrounds fenced off so that children couldn't play. There was no scientific background for any of that. The purpose of all those actions was to harm citizens, encourage them to leave Lompoc. Citizens are not allowed to smoke in your parks. End of story. Keep it simple.
Madam Clerk, did we receive any written commentary?
No, ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Seeing no one call in, we will close public comment on item nine and bring it back to council. And Councilmember Ball, you had the floor before we went to public comment.
Chief, if you want to yell it from there, I completely understand. Hope you wore your watch.
Foolish me.
So I'm going to put you on the spot.
Okay.
It was mentioned that you have a four and one, on average.
On average.
And that with that four and one, there's a likelihood, or there's a chance, that during a 2,500-person cannabis event, that there might be a call that you might have to respond to. Totally understand that. Can you explain the difference to me in the chances of you having to respond to a 2,500-person wine event versus a cannabis event?
So, but the only example that comes to mind is, several years ago, we had one at River Park. Everybody remember that one? It was a great event. And near the close of that, what happened? Anybody recall?
Oh, I do. I was there and got stuck there for an hour and a half, but it was completely unrelated to the event.
Unrelated to the event, but it still impacted.
But it impacted.
Because what happened was, we had a pursuit by the Sheriff Department that ended up and culminated, came to a conclusion, right at the entrance, the one entrance that allows ingress and egress from that park. And so departure was delayed for most of the participants over two hours, as I recall. What happened? We had to respond to assist the sheriffs in traffic control. So that's a classic example that comes to mind, and that's vivid, because I remember that, and I was in the station that day. So I recall it.
So it's been mentioned that it was not, it didn't have anything to do with the event itself. It was a wonderful event. This was something completely separate. Now, should, now, on you...
But it occurred at the event, so it was still impacted. So there's one, there wasn't exacerbated, or something that was any crime or aggravated incident at the event itself, but still something that happened that impacted it as well, which required that whole shift to respond initially.
And I totally understand. Since we've all kind of said or heard or stated that it wasn't as a result of the actual event or the coordinators, should we, and this might be your personal opinion, but should we, as a city, say, "Never again, no more wine events, because that thing happened"? That wouldn't be reasonable, in my estimation.
But let's take it a step further. We're going to do speculation and supposition on this. Let's say something had happened at that event. Those officers would have been tied up for the time until they could resolve that incident. If it had been, God forbid, an assault, major fight, some kind of major disruption, all those officers would have been dedicated, and we would have called out for outside resources to respond as well. So you always have that potential. And so, you know...
Are you willing to say that there's a specific difference between a wine and cannabis event in this context?
As I mentioned earlier, anytime you have a large group of people congregating in this day and era, safety should be a concern, and the protection of those who are participating.
And I absolutely agree.
Irregardless of whether there's substance use, now, that heightens it a little bit. We can't dismiss that. But in this day and age, anytime you have a congregation of people, a large congregation of people, you have to be concerned about public safety.
I agree. Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
So I want to touch on the parks and the locations themselves. River Park is mentioned, yet it calls in the staff report saying that it would require, although it's city-owned property, it's still county. So it says that it would require for possible permitting through the county. So why would we list a location when we haven't, I guess, done the due diligence to go to the county and say, "Hey, we're thinking about permitting this location"? Why put it out there to someone if there's a possibility that the county may not even approve that to happen? And again, that was at, that event that was being referenced right now was at the River Park. So again, that could happen, but I just think that it's a failure for us to designate an area where we don't even know if the event will be able to be held there. So what good does it do us to authorize or to permit that area, or to identify that area as a location? Ken Adam Park, I don't think that that is a right location, for all the reasons already stated in the staff report, that it would require brush area cleanup. The fire department spoke about it on the last meeting and said that it does not, out of all parks, that is the park that it does not recommend you approving this event for, due to the fact that it's of high risk, fire, a high-fire risk. So why, again, would we put it against the, as a permitted, or, you know, an area that could be considered, when our fire department already said, "No, no, no, please don't consider that location"? And then when you talk about Riverbend Park, my concern is, is that you have to drive through a neighborhood to get to this particular location. And again, that would be my biggest challenge there. Listen, I think that the answer is in the staff report itself, when it goes on to say that some cities and counties have hosted outdoors events, and many host enclosed convention centers that are not city-owned, not city-owned. The challenge with comparing Lompoc to other cities and counties is that Lompoc is unique in the venue options available. The way I read that is, this statement alone goes on to put in question whether we have the proper location for such events or not. And then it goes on to state, "Starting with outdoor events in specific parks for a specific number of events per year, is an optional route to determine the positive and negative impacts." This statement alone goes on to put in question whether there will be positive or negative impacts for the city and the residents of this community. So I'm sorry, but I can't vote on something that I feel could potentially have negative impacts on the majority of the residents of this community. So I would ask the council, and my motion would be, that we do not accept this staff report today, and that we table this for a time when we, as a city and as a council, can be responsible for repairing our parks, first and foremost for our residents and our children, before we invite 5,000 outside people to come in and take on our city parks, and use our, and deplete potentially, our city resources for their event.
So there is a motion on the floor, or does it have a second?
A second.
All right. Motion on the floor. Any questions? Let's vote. And that motion fails 3-2. I would like to make a substitute motion, trying to address some of the concerns that have been expressed by those that have been made. And I would like to put a limit of two events a year, that the three parks recommended be left in consideration as options to choose from, but at the Ken Adam Park, there be no smoking allowed until we have cleared the brush. So the first year, probably no smoking, until we can budget to clear the brush as acceptable. That we have a review after each event within 90 days to better understand the impacts as best as possible, and that we have a review of the ordinance after a year of its implementation. That we have a requirement that private security be hired at the level of recommendation by the Public Safety Department, and that an EMT be required present on the premises for the events. Let me know when you're done writing it all down. Yes?
Could you repeat the public safety one?
The public safety one, require private security be hired at the level the police department requires, and an EMT be present from the public safety side.
On the after 90 days, Mayor, was it after 90 days from one event, come to council and report the outcome?
Yeah, so we could know if, like, the first event had a major impact and what the issues were, so that if we need to readdress anything in the ordinance or take a step back, we can.
Okay. And the number you limited it to? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Oh, that's okay. Two? Oh, and I was going to say, for the first year, a cap of no more than 2,000 attendees.
Per event?
Per event.
Okay.
Unless the premises, say, like Ken Adams has a max already.
Okay. And how many events?
Two a year.
In total, out of the three venues?
Yeah, and I would say that if you get more applications than that, you can always bring it back to council for us to consider more events if our reviews have gone smoothly and we've not seen any issues.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm not going to give a second yet on that. I mean, I think that we're way over-complicating this. I'm just going to make a statement here. Mrs. Alacon, during the budget hearings, you made a statement, and it stuck with me. It came about with park improvements. We spent all the money on raises, you said, and you were absolutely correct. The money that we had was not used for what everybody wanted at that time. So as a council, we made a mistake. Now we're blaming ourselves, which we should be, because our parks have not changed. The issue with River Park, I mean, it'd be simple to me. If we have to deal with the county continually on this, we should annex it, not even pay the property tax, just annex it. And a little humor on the side here with the public safety aspect, I hope they don't bring drug dogs to a cannabis festival, you know?
Councilmember Cordova.
So first, I'll remind everyone that we just, again, admitted publicly that we failed to regulate even our own dispensaries on having proper security, but we're going to do it for these events, don't you worry, okay? We're going to take care of it. So, and I also want to say that there has never been any presence from the cannabis industry at any of these meetings that have ever been held, where they have been asking us to hold these events. So it's clear to me that this is an agenda item by our members of our council. But I will say, if it's a possibility that we can consider restricting the number of people, at least to start, if we could not say 5,000, but we could say maybe 1,000 people or 1,500 people, as opposed to 5,000, I would like for the council to consider that. And then also, once we do know what the cost of the clearing of the Ken Adam Park, I would ask that the council receive a full report as to the cost of that and who paid for that.
I did have a recommendation to cap any of the vents at no higher than 2,000, so is that within... Okay, that's okay. No, no, no. There was a long list of stuff that I was trying to accommodate all the concerns. And then I think your request for the brush clearance could be done as a separate council request, because that itself is a standalone item. So I would support you in making that as a council request, and disassociated with this.
I was just going to add that if we're not allowing smoking at Ken Adam, this beginning part of it, there won't really be a need for any clearing or anything of that nature. We do, Dean and Mario and I have been talking a lot and coming up with a game plan for park improvement projects. We got the big grant, so we know we have that giant project happening. We're doing some stuff at Thompson Park. So in evaluating the demands for service and usage at all of these parks, we are creating a capital improvement project list for parks and how we can be most impactful. So that's definitely going to be on the list. So that is one of the many items you guys are going to see soon, and when we're coming back. and when we're coming back and asking for contract approvals for those.
Well, I think it's still important to consider clearing the brush at Ken Adam because there are other events that occur there with, say, food trucks. And we have events there where they lease the barbecue pits. And so there is always a risk of those embers flying and starting it anyway. So I agree, it's of high priority whether or not a cannabis event is going to be there or not.
Sure.
But I think in the short term, if someone comes forward and says, we want to do an event, we would like to do it at Ken Adam because of parking, we want it to be small, so it's a cap of 600, they might be willing to consider it if it was a consumption event that just didn't have smoking. It would be edibles or dining of some sort. All right, so Councilmember Vega.
Mayor, I was wondering if we could incorporate a little bit of the thought process into improving our parks as part of this. I don't think any of you are against improving our parks and coming up with a short plan to come along with an event plan, not just cannabis, for anybody. I mean, really, we should, you know, we're going to be working on the budget. Maybe we're not doing it tonight. But why don't we all have a meeting of the minds here to say, hey, we should have a standard from which our parks are kept? You know, the Park and Recreation Department, the Community Development Department, they're in charge of that as long as we provide the funding and we provide the mechanism. Yes, the parks plan is long range, but let's do something date-specific so we can address all this so that as Councilwoman Cordova mentioned, so that the, you know, we want things the community can benefit from and not just for one event or two events. You know, I think if the kids benefit from it and the families benefit from the improved parks, the rest of it is, takes care of itself.
So I absolutely agree. And I think when we have the discussion in February about the next tranche of ARPA funds, as well as what the potential cannabis revenue from the taxes, we should definitely make short-term goals for our parks and have that as part of a discussion. So I think you're absolutely right.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Ball.
So I just want to, I just want to second that, double down on that. Look, I, there's no one up here that's against us improving our parks. One of the main reasons I got involved in even wanting to run is to try to figure out where do we find resources so that we can improve that. I'm very proud of this council for taking some, two or three substantial steps towards us getting there. I would submit to the rest of council, the most impactful thing that we can do, and it came before us and we could do it sooner than later, is to have a comprehensive master plan for our parks. Again, a comprehensive master plan for our parks. I know it's just the plan, but part of that, to the mayor's point, could include, as part of that analysis, can this park facilitate an event? Can it facilitate any event? Can it host 50 people? Can it host 5,000? So again, us going through and having a plan sets us up for success for us to start to see some changes in our community. And look, I cannot wait until we have the conversation where we actually allocate tangible resources that can be seen in the community within our parks. And I know that's going to happen sooner than later. So I'm excited to see that. And as soon as we can start talking about using some of the ARPA funds for some of this stuff, I'd love to see us have a percentage of that committed to our families and our children who deserve great parks. They deserve safety too. But if we could make a gesture towards that, you sign me up. I'll be there.
So there is a motion on the floor, and I'm looking for a second.
I'll give you a second.
Thank you. And we have a second. Any other questions or concerns before we vote? All right, seeing none, let's vote. And that passes three-two. All right, the next and final item for this evening's agenda is item 10, participation in nationwide opioid settlements. Adoption of resolution number 646821, authorizing the mayor to execute settlement documents in nationwide litigation with opioid manufacturers Johnson &amp; Johnson, Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Ortho McNeil Janssen Pharmaceuticals, Janssen Pharmaceuticals, and opioid distributors McKesson Corporation, Cardinal Health, and AmerisourceBergen Corporation. And after that mouthful, I will hand it over to our city attorney, Jeff Malave.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. This item has to do with two very large pieces of litigation that have just tentatively settled, that have been going on a nationwide basis by various states and counties and cities that have sued opioid distributors and manufacturers over the last few years. And this has to do with claims against those distributors and manufacturers related to their causing or contributing to the opioid epidemic in the United States. Two settlements have recently been reached in these cases, and they affect all states, cities, and counties in the entire nation that have over 10,000 residents. And the opioid distributors and manufacturers have agreed in those settlements to pay a total of $26 billion to settle those cases. That money, it will be distributed to public agencies around the entire country, like I said. Lompoc is estimated, and this is a number that could change, but based on the estimates right now, Lompoc is estimated to receive $749,295 out of the $26 billion from these settlements. And that number will be paid, that's the total number that will be paid in installments over 18 years if Lompoc chooses to participate in the settlements. And that's about $42,000 a year. The use of the funds is not just for anything the city would want to use it for. It is restricted to only certain uses that are related to opioid abatement and substance abuse uses that are listed in the settlement agreement. And I've excerpted them out as attachment eight to the staff report. So every city, state, and county is deciding before January 2nd whether to participate in these settlements. If you, if we as Lompoc decide to participate, oh, sorry, if we first, if we decide not to participate in the settlements, then all of the money that we would have received would go to the state of California. And the overall settlement pot would be reduced because the overall settlement pot or the total that the companies have to pay is determined by how many states and cities and counties decide to participate in the settlements. If we do decide to participate in the settlements, then Lompoc's share is automatically sent to the county of Santa Barbara every year as its thought or, I guess, the intent is that the county of Santa Barbara is the agency that deals with substance abuse and health issues in the county for their use for eligible opioid uses under the settlement agreements. The other thing that will happen is if we participate in the settlements is that the city will be waiving and releasing any claims that we as the city of Lompoc might have against these opioid distributors and manufacturing companies with respect to any claim that we might have relating to opioid use. I don't think that we as Lompoc would be bringing any lawsuits like that, so I am not concerned with waiving those claims. The last thing to consider is that if we do participate and our funds are, start to be allocated to the county of Santa Barbara, if Lompoc in any individual year decides that we have ourselves an eligible opioid-related use that we want to use those funds for, we can decide in that year to pull the funds from the county for ourselves, use them ourselves, but then we would have to incur the annual reporting cost that comes along with taking the money. And that's under the settlement agreement. We have to report how we use the money, and then they audit to make sure that it's an eligible use, and that involves some cost on behalf of the city. But in any individual year, we may decide that it's worth it and we can take those funds rather than having them be sent to the county if we, as the city, decide that we have an eligible use in that year. So the recommendation from staff is to participate, and that would involve approving items, attachments one through five that are attached to the staff report. Those are the settlement agreements and the participation forms, and also a resolution to be signed by the mayor, authorizing the mayor to execute those settlement documents. So that concludes the staff report, and I'm available for questions.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm going to ask Mr. Albro while he's here, but don't leave, Jeff.
I won't.
Is this worth it? You know, our staff time, we're, you're moving into a different position. There's going to be a shift in finance. And I mean, we're talking about a money that, I'm not real familiar with attachment eight. This whole thing is kind of a confusing topic to try and read.
Well, I think far as reporting, it's not going to be too cumbersome. But I think I'd rather defer it to our chief because I think that would be where we'd have to decide whether it's worth utilizing.
Yeah, I mean, the staff recommends it, so there's obviously a reason. And I'm looking for a reason to say, why don't we just let the county have it? And then we do decide to draw, we could go ahead and incur the, you know, the administrative aspect, but...
So if I could just add, I believe last year in the county we had 114 opiate-related deaths. Quite significant increase. And as I mentioned before, in the nation, it was 102,000, up from 60,000 the year before. And what's alarming is 10% of those 102,000 occurred in the state of California. So I know that the county chiefs, we've been in meetings, were looking at some strategies, programs to address opiate overdoses, prosecution of those involved in dealing opiates and so forth. So this fund, as city attorney indicated, would go to the county unless we have a specific need in that given year that we would then appeal to the county and ask for that money. And then at that time, we would have to report it. But if the subsequent year, we went back to support the county program, then they're responsible for the reporting. But I really think it's money that we shouldn't pass up. I think it's in our best interest, not only for the county...
You said pass up.
That we shouldn't give up on.
Oh, not give up on?
I think we should take it. And...
So you're basically going to be the cog on this?
Right. So my understanding is, as I said before, the line share or the amount that's allocated will go to the county. And then the cities can appeal for their piece if they have a specific program that meets the criteria under the settlement.
Well, I tell you, you guys are smarter about it than me, and I'm smart enough to listen, so...
All right.
Councilmember Cordova.
So if we say, you know, we're giving up the money to the county and the county, we just said that we'd have to appeal to the county if we had a program, but how do we know that they wouldn't have used the funds that year already?
Because we, because we tell the county that we want the money ourselves before the payment is even issued in that year by the companies.
So if we don't tell them for the year, then that, and we don't have anything, then the county is then allowed to use that money however they want to use it throughout the county?
We'd have to wait a year, till the next year, the next year's payment.
But yet, I'm just puzzled why we would be giving it up to the county when it states that there is also limits on expenditures where money not expended or encumbered within five years of receipt must be transferred to the state. So does this mean that they're giving us five years to spend, up to five years to spend the money?
Yes. So if the money goes to the county and they don't use it within five years, county has to send it to the state. Similarly, if we decide to take the money in any given year and we don't use it for five years, we have to send it to the state.
So why would we be giving it to the county? If we have five years to hang on to this money and decide? I don't know. I guess the way I look at it is, why can't we take this money ourselves as a city and find something in our police department that we could allocate this money to? And so we have a report or two that we have to write. I'm not saying it's easy, but we have up to five years to use this money.
We can. So we could decide to participate in the settlement and then just start telling the county every year, we want to take the money. And we would get every single payment, and then we would have five years to use that money.
But the way the staff report is written is it's basically saying that we can agree to not do anything, and then we, it's almost like we're forfeiting participation, right?
Right.
Or that we participate and we give the money to the county, and again, then we have to go ask for the county, can we have some money?
Yeah.
Or we take the money ourselves as a city separately.
It's either you participate or you don't. So if you don't participate in the settlement agreement, everything goes to the state.
Okay.
We don't get anything, county doesn't get anything. If you do participate in the settlement agreement, the default is all the payments for Lompoc go to the county.
Okay.
Unless we say, no, we want those payments in any given year.
But we still have to ask the county for it because what you're saying is the money's going to be distributed to the county.
Right.
Stop, hard stop, not even to us.
Right.
The only way for us to access it is to appeal to the county as they're going through plans to spend it and say, this is what we were asking for, and here's why, how we know we'll spend it. And then we have five years to accumulate it and potentially spend it all in one place or spend it annually or whatever that five-year window is.
That's right.
But you're saying that absolutely the option is accept or not accept. And if we accept, it has to go to the county, and then we access it by appealing to the county.
And we do that every year, correct?
We do that every year.
We'd have to do it every year. And you're, and one last thing is you're using the word appeal, but it's really just, we tell them.
We tell them, it's not appeal, it's literally their name of their process. And we say, we're using it this year, and they're obligated to give us our 42,000. It's a pass-through. Thank you.
Roger that.
That's right.
Okay. Councilmember Vega.
Jeff, isn't there a way to negotiate with the county when the county's going to be the benefactor here? We negotiate for every other thing. You know, it seems like, you know, it's to their benefit. They're going to, according to staff recommendation, that they're going to gain the $750,000. Isn't there something that Lompoc needs from the county we've been wrangling for? In essence, they get to keep the $750,000, but we get something the other way so we don't have a reporting requirement? Doesn't it work like that with Lafco and anything else that we do?
Well, anytime, these are just the rules under the settlement agreement. So anytime that we decide to take the money from the county in any given year, we're going to have to do that reporting requirement.
No, and I understand, but I'm saying to get out of the reporting requirement because the county seems like they do anything with public safety, they do anything to get the money for calls and things. So it seems like to us, maybe we need to maybe use our versatility to see what we could do because it seems like they are the major benefactor since we don't really want to be the reporting agency. You know, just a question, but I understand. You know, I don't think we're looking outside the box to see what money we can get out of them without reporting it, you know? So what if we just wanted a quarter of it? You know, would we be subject to reporting? Or is it, do we have to take the whole thing?
We'd be subject to reporting even if we took a quarter.
It almost sounds like we're scared to take on that part of it. So that's why I'm asking.
The county's not making the rules. These are the settlement that was agreed to by the parties in the litigation.
Totally understand, but if we take the money, we're subject to be the reporting party.
Yeah.
I understand, but just a question, seems like hands-off. But thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
Well, first of all, I just want to say, look, is this money from the feds going to fix opioid crisis? Probably not, but it may do a little bit to make some inroads and to help push us in the right direction. It's a very tough, complicated issue. I don't want us to take it lightly because, as was mentioned, this is a problem throughout the state of California, throughout our country. But it's also a local issue here. And these are real people dealing with addiction issues. And it's not, it's not ideal, to say the least. I would be curious, considering that that's $42,000 a year over 18 years, if the city can come up with a better plan than what the county would offer. My theory is that the county would say, well, yeah, of course, we'll put a little bit more resources towards Lompoc, but it would be pretty hard for us to track that specifically. It's not a lot of money, so it's not going to get us a full-time, you know, doctor here. But it'd be nice for us to control as much of the resource as possible. So I, for me personally, I agree with those that would love to keep the money here in City Hall, considering that I feel like we could, we could possibly do something better with that. But I would wait to hear from staff on that.
I think we intend to do that as staff, is every year, we're going to be thinking, are there uses for that $42,000? And then we could come to council and say,
Right.
Here's an idea for how we could use the $42,000. Here's an idea for how we could use the forty-two thousand dollars this year or for the two hundred thousand for the next five years, and we'll take it every five years and then get council's approval for that.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions before we take public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll open the floor for public comment on item 10. If you would like to call in, the number to call is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one, eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. The floor is open. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communications on this item?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you. Seeing no one rise and no one call, I will bring it back to council, councilmember Cordova.
So, my concern would be that we, that we don't make a move today that would solidify that we are going to take the money every year, as opposed to leaving it just in the hands of the county. And anything that the county does doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to benefit specifically Lompoc. It'll benefit the area, of course, but we know that a lot of the services sometimes also that they may offer, and they may wanna place in Lompoc, also bring additional people from outside of Lompoc to become now our problem as well. And so, I, I would ask the council to consider, and maybe, I guess this is a motion, to designate the money to a specific position or service within our PD and that we would make the commitment tonight to match the funds annually. So if we are getting forty-two thousand dollars, can we find forty-two thousand dollars in our budget and match it so that we have then eighty-eight thousand dollars annually for potentially a position for a mental health clinician, somebody that will support directly our police department? And, and they have that position starting from year one? And that the requirement would be that we do ask for the money every year and we do do the reporting every year, that we have a mental health clinician?
Yes, we could totally bring a staff report back with what we could utilize that resources.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, is that unless somebody comes up with anything different, I'm saying, because I read through the list of, the list of opioid remediation uses that are allowed uses, I guess, and in there, it does state that you're allowed to hire additional social workers or other behavioral health workers to facilitate. So, if I'm reading this correctly, then it, then it allows for us to potentially hire someone within our, our local government that can provide supporting services for our own police department to be able to handle. So, I don't know if the council would, would agree or consider that. That's my motion, is that we not just take the forty-two thousand, that we match the forty-two thousand, making it an eighty-eight thousand dollar budget item, and then that we give it to the police department in the form of a specific use or service or position so that we're not spending it on all these different areas, little bits here and there, which require more reporting, but by having one specific use that could potentially make an impact, your reporting is reduced, in my opinion.
I'm not sure what the question exactly is, but yes, we could definitely come back with a staff report and, and have an example of what we could utilize those resources for. And we could even, knowing what's in the budget, we could actually match some resources and get more bang for our buck.
So, so to councilmember Cordova's point, I, I absolutely agree with the recommendation. So, let me see if I can attempt to modify it so that we accept the funds. And the second part is to request a staff report come back with, yes, options, but the priority be what would it take to hire a mental health individual in the police department utilizing these funds? And what would the required matching funds be? Because it may be more than, you know, another forty-two thousand, depending on, you know, mental health position. But that be the number-one priority. And then if it's going to be too expensive, the report also have some additional options that we might use it for so that we can make that decision. Does that help?
Yes, but I would, if possible, like, the commitment from the council that we will agree at minimum to match it, and if it requires more, then the staff report would identify that and we could have that discussion at that time. But at minimum, we're agreeing tonight to say, we're going to invest and we're gonna take this forty-two thousand and at minimum, we're gonna match it at a hundred percent.
As far as the budget goes, yes, we can, we can accommodate that.
And I don't know if, if Chief Mariani has any kind of suggestion of what he thinks, if I'm wrong, if I'm way off or not, or if he thinks that, that the money could be used elsewhere. But, I mean, that could be left for the report also later on. But, I mean, unless he disagrees about us making this commitment tonight.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, is, so the commitment would have to come back later. The, the idea can be tonight, but we'll have to bring back a staff report to make a final commitment to that.
Exactly, yeah.
And hopefully, I will be able to provide additional input from what the county law enforcement executive committee is thinking about too. Because cooperatively or as a, as a collaborative union, they may have an idea of a, a program that would benefit us all. So, I'd like to talk to them about it too, as well as to see what their plans are too.
My concern with that would be that, again, anything we do with the county is broad for the entire county. So what I'm trying to do is make a commitment specifically for our home.
So, I would just say this, that I'm looking to see what, what the plan is, because this also includes several other cities in the county, Santa Barbara, Santa Maria, ourselves, Guadalupe, and then the county. And I'd just like to hear what, what the ideas are in terms of a collaborative effort too as well. Because if it is to our benefit, then I would tell you. If I didn't think it would be in our best interest, then I would also tell you as well.
So, if I may, I don't know if this would meet your needs for your motion, councilmember Cordova, but it sounds like, either way, whether we're going to use the money or not, we would still need to participate in the settlement rather than having the money go to the state of California. So, what we could do is the council could decide tonight to participate. Then the money will not go to the state, it'll either come to the county or to the city. And we could, you could direct us to have a future agenda item soon, where we could talk about, are we gonna take the money? Do we have things to use it for? The chief can look into the county program that they're thinking about using it for, and the council can decide what's the best way to use this money. Let it go to the county for their program or take it for ourselves every year if we have a use for it.
Okay, so if we can't make the commitment then to match funds tonight, can we at least make the commitment to say, we're gonna take the money and we're gonna ask for the money every year? And then talk about how we can potentially spend it? I just think that, just simply, that's not my motion anyway, to just simply approve that we're gonna participate. That's not the motion that I have on the floor.
Yeah, you can absolutely say tonight in your motion, you're gonna participate and we're gonna take the money every single year. Of course, a future council could change that, but you can make that motion tonight, yeah.
Of course. So, that would be my motion, is that we agree to participate and at minimum, that we agree tonight that we will take the money. We have five years to use those funds or be required to give it back to the state. So I think that, 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 that that gives us enough time. But I would ask then that the staff report be brought back before the end of the full year, that we take our first payment from them if it goes through. So I guess that would be the third point on my motion.
I think she means that before we have to make the decision whether to take the money in the first year, like the first...
No, no, no.
...payment of money, you want the staff report to come back.
No, 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 I'm saying we're, my motion is to participate and take the money.
Right.
And then that we identify before the first full year, that we identify potentially a use for it and the staff report comes back. But we're, my motion is to participate and take the money every year, unless council changes it afterwards.
And then to return with a staff report of options of how to spend it. Yeah, that's, that's the clarity. I know that sounded really confusing, but I will give you a second, 'cause I understood it. Does staff have any other questions as to what the motion is? Councilmember Ball.
So, this all sounds, sounds like a plan to me. I am, the only thing that makes me hesitant is the chief did mention that he is curious to hear what said plan might be. And if we go this direction, we're just blowing that off.
No, at this point, we can still decide that if the chief recommends the program, we can accept that our payment will go back to the county and be used as part of the county.
Okay.
But it gives us that window, but it says, first and foremost, our priority is to make sure the money is spent in Lompoc. And if chief can guarantee that that forty-two thousand of the program that's given back to the county is going to be spent in Lompoc, we might decide to support it.
Well, with that clarity, I could definitely support that.
That was your intent, right? All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes five-zero. All right, any additional written communications this evening?
No ma'am, nothing.
None, all right. This is your final chance for oral communications on city-related matters for two minutes. You may come to the podium or call eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one, eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one. And while we wait to see if there's any calls, I'm just gonna congratulate all the holiday decoration winners. We had, non-residential was first place, The Garden Shop, second place, The Box Shop, and third place was Cornerstone Realty. And the residential winners were four thirty-two South A Street, second place was thirteen fifty-two Marigold Way, and third place was three oh four Ladera, so go out and take a look at those lights. All right, I think I've killed enough time to realize no one is calling in at this point. And we will close oral communications and bring it back to council. I'll start with councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilmember Cordova.
I just wanted to see, we talked about there being a shift in finance as our city manager takes his seat at the next meeting or at the beginning of the year. And so, that leaves obviously a vacancy in the, in the management services director position, which I understand that we potentially have identified someone that's gonna move up in that position. Is it possible for us to have that also resolved by that date? Otherwise, inform the public that there is a vacancy in that position now? I think not addressing it, I'm not comfortable with not addressing that.
Yeah, I, I think when the new city manager starts on January third, there will be a vacancy in the management services director position that he will then have to fill, designate someone as acting as one of his first orders of business, I'm sure. And so that's the prerogative of the new city manager.
Correct. What I'm trying to avoid is making sure that we have one person straddling two positions. So I wanna make sure that we're, we're transparent on that.
And I'm sure as soon as our new city manager makes that appointment, he will send us all an email announcing what that interim position has been filled and what the next steps will be.
But if we say, when that position is filled, then that leaves the understanding that that could take a while, which I understand it could take a while. Again, for the sake of transparency, what I'm trying to avoid is those two positions being straddled for any period of time, but that we have identified someone. So, in other words, if he's taking his position in January, then there should be someone that is assigned at that time, not a later time.
Yeah, pretty much all my duties will be, I can't, I can't approve money anymore and I will put somebody acting immediately, so...
Yeah. And again, Dean, nothing to do with you, it's just for me, it's just protocol, that's the only way that I look at it.
Very good.
All right, councilmember Vega.
I'd like to put a call out for a couple of commission members or committee members or looking for specifically tonight, someone for beautification and someone for parks. A commissioner, we need the help. I'm sure the commissioners would appreciate it. We wanna improve our parks, we wanna make things better for our families. So, I'd like to encourage anybody after the new year at least to apply for one of the committee or commission members' positions here. We specifically made a temporary ruling here for, regardless of district, for someone that would like to participate even temporarily. So I'd like to put that, that out there for the public, anybody that wants to participate in making Lompoc just a little bit better. Thank you.
Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. I had the opportunity to attend the Future for Lompoc Youth. It's a small group here that's working with young people. And they had a little graduation at the Hilton, and that was just wonderful. There was, I can't remember the number, but I think close to fifteen students supplemented their time at the Lompoc High School with a lot of career development, a lot of introductions to people in the real workforce, great participation from the principal at Lompoc High School, and Alan Hancock was involved and Davika Stallings from the chamber, and Chuck Mattson, Tim Harrington, they all did a wonderful job. And that was just, it just stunned me to, to be reminded that it's so easy for us to blow off kids in the inner city and we just don't think about it. But these were amazingly talented, incredibly smart kids that are gonna be future leaders, whether here or anywhere else. And I was just reminded that we have to stay invested as a city, as a community, and making sure we get these kids to the finish line. And I'm really proud of that group for standing up and making something happen in that regard. And last, I got my first opportunity to attend a promotion ceremony at the police station. And it was just amazing, and the cake was actually really good too, thank you very much. But we had, there's two promotions, and we had one young man that just finished his academy training and was sworn in as an officer here. And he also received a leadership award at the academy. I mean, this is, these are top-notch folks. So, I just wanna give a shout-out, and correct me if I got their title wrong, but this is Sergeant Mark Powell, Corporal Robert Duggan. And the new officer is Francisco De La Mora. And we're headed in the right direction with public safety, and I'm really proud of these folks. And thanks for the invite, and I'm, I'm happy to support.
All right, so I also attended the PD promotion, and congratulations to the promotions and new hires. And Future was amazing. I have been supporting Future from day one of their organization and to see an actual class process and graduate through a program put on by them shows real potential for what more students can expect from this organization. And we need to go out and support it for all it's going to do for all of our students. I also attended the Daughters of American Revolution wreath laying this past weekend at the cemetery honoring veterans at the holidays. I wanna thank that organization. They raised enough money to put four hundred and fifty wreaths out. We have over fifteen hundred vets buried at our local cemetery. It will become an annual event, so I look forward to seeing you out there and supporting it next year. It was, it was a lovely day for it, a little cold, but otherwise lovely. I also went out to the Vandenberg Space Force' second birthday yesterday. And it is with great pride that they are progressing and, and growing that side of the force and doing amazing things, and we hope with our work through the grant to be able to support that long-term. I also attended Santa Barbara County area government meetings and air pollution control district meetings as our representative. A few things, a reminder, our holiday hours here at City Hall, the library, the Anderson Rec Center, the Dewey Center, and the Aquatic Center, we are closed as of December twenty-third through Sunday, January second. And utilities will be on limited basis until January sixth upon return. There is the Resolution Run on January first, so even though the Parks and Rec Department is, is closed, we're still hosting the January first run. It's at nine AM at Riverbend Park for twenty bucks, and check-in starts at eight AM or you can register on the city website, cityoflompoc.com. And Community and Partners in Caring is seeking drivers to assist local residents, seniors getting to and from appointments, grocery shopping, and that sort of thing. And you can reach out to partnersincaring.org or eight zero five nine two five eight thousand and volunteer your time. We also have lifeguard training being hosted by the city of Santa Bar, uh, city of Santa, city of Lompoc again, sorry. We are the only ones doing this so regularly that I get phone calls from other cities about, when's your program? And we're hosting it again in January, so it's Saturday, the eighth, ninth, and fifteenth. And you can also go to our city website and go to a link there. I announced those lovely Christmas winners, and we really appreciate you decorating your homes and really bringing the spirit forward. But what's really exciting is the headline for the first time in the Lompoc record, from December fifteenth, every single story was a positive headline about the city of Lompoc, from the eight million dollar budget surplus to the winners for the holiday, to the skate park receiving the grant for three point six million to be improved. And I wanna see more headlines like this in 2022, and I think...
and I think we're on the right path. So, I wanna close by saying thank you, Mr. Troop, once again, for putting us on that path. Um, you left us with, uh, a big responsibility to deliver on those things, and we will do that with, uh, Mr. Albro as our leader, and we really appreciate the time you've given to us. I wanna wish everyone a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and a Happy New Year, and we will adjourn this meeting until the first meeting of January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two.